Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we've called the meeting this morning. Are there any public comments before we start? Okay, seeing none in the room, we'll dispense with that. We've called the meeting today to get an update on the COVID-19 virus. Dr. Conway, would you like to join us?
Sure. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair, just kind of acknowledging that today we have a possible proposed emergency declaration of state of emergency. So that's kind of the business of the day. I'm just trying to, you know, we'll have an update and then really working towards that is kind of the goal possibly this morning, just coordinating amongst the three of us.
And so my goal also is to, you know, we have a work session on Monday, but going into the weekend, it's becoming clear that there's a variety of roles that we play and the county plays, things that are changing, like at some of our facilities, like the fairgrounds where that are impacting lots of people. So I think it's also a chance to talk about some of the emerging questions as well, was my hope, and so do that as well.
Great.
So I've asked Morgan Emerson to come up with it because she's more privy to the daily stats from OHA. I haven't seen him since last night. So as you're aware, we have a case that we announced a couple of days ago. We're anticipating others. There's a declared outbreak in the veterans home in Lebanon as of yesterday with a number of positives. That's part of what's prompted a series of additional measures beyond the governor's declaration, including a planned school closure, which I believe starts Monday for two weeks. We've had a vigorous media response. We have a number of things that we strongly believe we need. There's been some progress made and with some thanks to Representative Help for her assistance in reaching out and coordinating with OHA in at least locating and hopefully being able to requisition rapidly additional tranches of N95 masks. We appreciate the Commissioner's support in that same enterprise. There's been, I don't know if it's my business to recommend this or not, but I think there's probably enough momentum that it'd be appropriate for the board to consider an emergency declaration since some of the things we're going to need are supplies, some of them are quite expensive. I don't think we want to have the same experience as everybody had trying to buy hand sanitizer two weeks ago in a store. If we wait, we'll be the last in line to try to get some of these things.
Okay.
I've got a couple of questions just about specifics, you know, terminology, positive presumptive case. Can you just explain that process real quick? So the fact that presumptive is a step to be confirmed by CDC and then it's confirmed?
I'm slightly reminded and humbled with how poor my translation skills are from technical language to something more comprehensible. I'm Morgan's expert at that, so.
Thank you. Just terminology for the public, you know?
So presumptive means that, so CDC sent out the test kits to the state public health lab. So the state public health lab validated that and now they're testing these specimens. So this specimen, so presumptive positive is a specimen that tested positive on that test kit, and then the CDC just requires it to be sent to Atlanta to secondary confirm that. Typical, almost, I think in every case now, they've had that confirmed positive once it's sent and validated. Obviously, that takes some time. If a sample is a presumptive positive sent to CDC and does not test positive at CDC, it would become a suspect case. So we would still take those same precautions.
Would you retest here then?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Would you retest here then if we got a mixed message on it?
I don't know the answer to that.
What we'd probably do is we would ask for an additional specimen. We'd send that and possibly two of them. We'd send that either directly to OHA Lab in Hillsborough or with their permission directly to the CDC for retesting.
So we're one step away from determining whether the presumptive is clearly a case.
Well, excuse me, that's true, but as Emerson said, there have been, as far as I know, no instances in which presumed cases, as adjudged by Hillsborough under the advice of CDC, were not confirmed. So I have a high degree of confidence this way.
Yeah, and I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that when that happens, the word presumptive leaves the discussion. We have a confirmed case in the county. So we heard about the presumptive being initiated or declared on Wednesday. This is Friday, so how many more days do you think before CDD rules on that case?
We've been seeing around a week in other cases, however, as this situation evolves, that means more tests are being sent to CDC for confirmation. So we don't know.
Okay.
There's great concern about the turnaround times, rapidity. There's been a huge amount of media coverage, discussions yesterday, including a press conference in which Dr. Tony Fauci, who's the Director of the National Institute for Allergy and Infectious Disease, indicated that the shortfall and delays in testing was extremely problematic and has been a direction since for the federal government to hurry up. We don't know exactly what that will look like. I think that it's safe to assume that, to the extent possible, local governments and institutions have to work very quickly, and we are grateful that private industry is stepping in to help out with rapid testing. We have that coming online here, available through two laboratories. University of Washington has also been willing to backstop this for institutions in the Northwest. So we are doing our best to press this and to get more definitive results on large volumes quickly.
So I have a follow-up to that. So we've had the one presumptive case, and I hear from other counties, they're talking about monitoring other cases or, which is they've taken samples and they've sent them in, they don't know. Do we have any of that now or is that relevant?
Yes, we do. And actually, the terms of art, the technical terms, unfortunately, we have to be a bit careful with.
Yeah.
We're monitoring people. They would not be called cases. They would be called persons under monitoring.
Okay.
Because many of those people that we monitor, and this will be an expanding circle, are people that may have had high-risk contact but that we do not believe currently have the virus or we have pending testing on them without any preliminary or presumptive results.
So I have a question. Do you know then, Dr. Conway, are those eight people at the Veterans Hospital in Lebanon, are they considered presumptive at this point in time? Are they confirmed? I mean, what information do we have?
So the individuals, according to the OHA release yesterday, the individuals who tested positive from the veterans home are considered presumptive positive cases. They were tested by the Oregon State Public Health Lab using the test kit from CDC. So they did test presumptive positive, and then those samples should get sent to CDC for confirmation.
If I may, I know the terminology is confusing and that this lexicon is very frustrating to work with publicly. My understanding is that because Centers for Disease Control had a problem with the first set of kits that they pushed, the states had to do a recall. The technical problem's been identified. That's part of what contributed to the delay. It's apparently one of the illuents, one of the dilution agents was implicated in that. Time will tell. But my understanding is the main reason that this was done was to ensure that the federal government would have some sort of real-time surveillance, but also so that CDC could be cross-checking its results with state labs. So I think it's important to bear in mind that most state laboratories are working a very high standard. So even though we're freighted with this presumptive term, I have a very high degree of confidence that what Hillsborough is doing, and so far that's been verified in each of the instances in both directions, negative and positives, there's been controls run through the system. Their negatives have been CDC's negatives. So I just, I wouldn't wait around for that. I think it's always possible there would be some other problem, but I would just treat those as people are infected. However, there's important civil liberties, reputational HIPAA issues involved in this. We have to be very, very careful about the language used to describe people that are ill and be as vague as possible unless there's some community notification necessary about who those persons might be as well as people that are under monitoring so that the population will continue to test or outreach and their clinicians outreach.
So I kind of want to move to that because after your announcement Wednesday in our press conference, there has been a lot of questions about release of information. And you're obviously the expert on the rules and HIPAA and all those things. But what it seems to be happening, what I was wondering is, if it's just an individual in the community, as I understood your process, that has a presumptive infection of this, then you're doing what you call an investigation, which means contacting people. I guess you're probably interviewing the person and contacting people that would have come in contact with that person. And that could be just somebody in the neighborhood, so to speak, or, you know, that. So what I'm concerned with is if, the lot of the fear that is most concerning to me is with the public health facilities, assisted living, care centers, et cetera, and what we've seen in Washington and now we've seen in Lebanon, I mean, I have a relative that actually works there, so I've had heard about that. So if it's in a, is there going to be different classifications of what you reveal? So, okay, can you talk about that policy a little bit? Because I know a lot of interest in the public on that.
I hope you'll forgive me if I make a correction to one of the things you did.
I'm glad you're making corrections because we need to talk correctly too. I think we all feel that way.
Having been in the neighborhood of someone that was ill would not, would definitely not cross the threshold of somebody that had had sufficient exposure that could lead to.
Yeah, that's not, yeah.
As requiring monitoring. So I want to make that clear.
And I was referring to being somebody that's just a person in the community. I was not very artful. Thank you.
Messaging is very important.
Yeah.
There's, I don't need to tell anyone in the room. There's considerable public anxiety about this, and we don't want to add to that. The first thing is just a biologic fact is, as far as we understand, while there are truly airborne potential viruses such as measles, which if you, it's been well documented, if you have someone in a room or someone in an aircraft or whatever, anywhere near a person with measles or entering a room just even an hour or two after somebody with measles has been in it that's symptomatic, it's possible to acquire measles. There's no evidence that this virus can be transmitted by a prolonged suspension in the air and very strong evidence that the primary way that it's transmitted is either through droplets traveling through the air from a sneeze or cough or by somebody touching one of those droplets, which they may or may not see, that's in mucus on a surface, and the virus does survive some time there. So the people that we would be most concerned about are people that had spent prolonged periods of time with someone who is ill and especially someone who has met the case definition and has at least a presumed case for prolonged period of time inside of that social distance parameter of six feet in theory, but definitely arms length or three feet. So if you're eating dinner with somebody every day in the household, if you're sharing dishes, if you shared a cup, if it's an intimate partner, all those things would clearly be inside that. And one of the reasons why we have to entrust people to share with us and they have to trust us is that we have to inquire more about the degree of contact and the proximity and level of intimacy with other individuals to make a good judgment about whether or not we're going to ask this person to, you know, self-quarantining isn't really a trivial thing. You know, if you have a giant house and, you know, you're in a nice place where you can go out for a walk occasionally, that's okay. But a lot of the people are at the highest risk for this, maybe in apartments, they may be in the sort of other settings you described. As far as notification to the community, we will definitely commit to transparency about any locale or circumstance that creates any untoward risk for others with definable, either probably not granular demography, but at least the locale, if there's some need to know. So for example, in Seattle-King County, there was foreknowledge that there was coronavirus present, and there was actually early evidence of that in influenza-like illness specimens that had been sampled actually even in late January, I believe. However, the public notification and the localization of that notification became absolutely necessary when there was a number of cases in an adult, an extended care facility. And the reason for that is that you have to get the word out so that people will be in contact, follow-up, know whether or not they can visit their loved ones, understand the potential hazard. So sometime, anytime that we have a definable pattern, which would be helpful to the public to respond in a way that they could further protect themselves, we will very quickly share that. However, the flip side, if we, wittingly or unwittingly, or if someone is indiscreet that's in healthcare or otherwise, shares very granular information, for example, on social media or whatever, about where someone lives, the prospect of trying to endure a prolonged self-quarantine under some sort of public scrutiny, I think, is a very unfair thing to ask of any individuals. So that's what we're trying to avoid.
So what I hear you saying is kind of what I asked, that if it's an individual that doesn't maybe have a lot of close social distance connections with a larger group, maybe that's not revealed in any way to protect that person. If it's in a facility or some kind of organization where it easily could spread because of a lot of contact, that'll raise to a different level and there'll be a different kind of, it'll be made public in a different way. That's, you are, okay, that's what I was trying to understand.
I would like to add one other thing that I tried to make clear in the draft that we all looked at yesterday, one of the media outlets that had challenged this practice. And that is that the other thing that would prompt this is that we have a fairly good idea now from other countries and emerging in the United States of the demography of people that are becoming ill, those that are infected but not ill, and the people that are at high risk for being gravely ill. So the pattern that's emerging is that older individuals are most susceptible. The susceptibility to complications increases very substantially with each decade after the 60s. So 70s are much higher risk, the 80s are much higher risk. And then those are compounded greatly by any underlying chronic disease, particularly cardiopulmonary disease, but also chronic diseases that cause any derangement of metabolism such as diabetes mellitus, which greatly inhibits the body's rapid response to invasion by an infectious disease. People under age 60 are still at substantial risk of having some complication just from the viral infection, but in turn, those individuals are also much more susceptible to complications if they have an underlying chronic disease. The other threshold in which we would notify, make public notification after consulting with the other people who are backstopping us at OHA, colleagues, CDC, et cetera, would be if we were to notice a substantial departure from that demography and that type of medical history. Because that would be newsworthy in that we might have to advise the populace differently.
So, Dr. Conway, the fact that the, one of the first cases in Washington County actually was a teacher, apparently that was public knowledge then because they cleaned that school, closed that school down. So you're saying because where that person actually worked and it was impactful, so we needed to let people know?
That's a very good example of an environment where risk notification must be made very quickly, public awareness must be raised, and it raises a lot of policy issues. And it's one of the inputs that I believe has led to the decision now between that, the Lebanon event, other things, another school district that had one of the index cases in the state with a maintenance worker at one of the other school districts to be, custodial worker, to be revealed for fear of missing containment opportunities.
Well, that was like Wild Horse. The employee at Wild Horse in Umatilla County, they closed Wild Horse immediately when they knew what was happening and, you know, were cleaning the entire operation. So, and that was a couple of weeks ago.
Right. Well, but the, this sort of illustrates the underlying premise, though, that unless that's necessary, then everybody knows the name of whatever Wild Horse is or whatever else, and.
It's a casino, run by the Confederate tribes of the Umatilla.
Thank you.
So they, you know, they immediately, I didn't, I never saw the name of the person. I just know that they immediately were on.
Right. Well, in a setting like that, we potentially had a lot of people in the public that have been through that and maybe spent a protracted time, period of time there. It is good to get the word out, and that's the flip side of this, is that we're not adamant about containing information. We're merely respectful of HIPAA confidentiality and filtering things by any need to know. So these are examples of need to know where we might want to actually push public dissemination of either that shift in the patterns of illnesses or in a locale. But I have to say that those instances would be relatively rare.
So I know the state said they were going to do inspecting of care facilities. I believe there were like over 700. Do you know, have they been able to start that? Are we aware?
Actually, Morgan may know that, but I will point out that we actually have a grant from the state to reduce the risk for, part of our public health monetization grants, to reduce the risk of infectious disease dissemination and control failures in long-term living facilities. So I hope that we're headed again, but maybe you can answer the question directly.
So I don't know if the inspections have started in Shute County yet, and I was going to mention that. But I do know that our infection prevention nurse who works specifically with long-term care facilities has been working with our facilities since January to help them prepare and make sure that they have plans in place for dealing with this.
That's clearly a known susceptibility, and there's, it's difficult to imagine a more difficult environment to prevent and control that. And that, part of that is because the knowledge is that not only is the disease commonly transmitted by coughs and sneezes, et cetera, but it's also transmitted in stool and other body fluids that have to be handled routinely in such facilities for the less, the less able clients. The hygienic control is very, very difficult. And all of us in our training as public health physicians and epidemiologists had occasions where we had to investigate major outbreaks. For example, enteric outbreaks like Novavir, Norwalk virus or Novavir, one of the round viruses that's an infectious disease that's transmitted by fecal-oral route that causes a lot of sickness on cruise ships and things like that. That's inevitable as part of your career, having to investigate one of those in a nursing home or long-term care facility because they're extremely susceptible to that. And it's extremely difficult to have definitive antisepsis in care the way that, say, a hospital does because they have much higher staffing to patient ratio in a hospital than is possible economically at a long-term care facility.
Well, I know they are most vulnerable in this case, so I just, I'm glad to hear that we do have that infectious disease person that's been working with them since January. Thank you, Morgan, for that update.
And that's, it's an extreme challenge because oftentimes, family members are placed in such a facility with a lot of regret and concern by family members. And in an instance like this can really compound that because it's only sensible and clearly scientifically justifiable to prohibit visitation, not only to the individuals that are ill, but to the facility. And that causes great hardship and anxiety on the part of the people. So we have to be, while such notification, the subject that we entered this on, is prudent, we have to be very sensitive that this is a really, this is a really awful social circumstance. We have to be very sensitive about as well.
So what I hear, just to close out on this notification, different kinds of responses to different kinds of circumstances, when you're talking about the facilities and the fear part, is there anything else we could be doing with regard to the people that are residents of those long-term care facilities from a talking points or from a county process? Is there anything, I mean, there's, I know there's, because they have shortages of employees a lot of times, and there's a, and then you've got this whole family dynamic. Is there something we could be doing about that with regard to letters or anything?
One thing is, although I'm, I was trying to make a case for why we need to be sensitive and discreet in the way we handle this sort of thing, we also have to, as public officials, set a very good model for not overreacting and not being, or at least revealing any anxiety about the circumstance. And that's particularly true, I mean, if a long-term care facility, they have to have resupply of food, they have to have resupply of everything else. So you have to make clear that dropping things off at the loading dock, for example, is not a risky behavior in one of these facilities. Getting things there, the postman can still deliver mail. The law enforcement, they have to come, have to take measures that they've been trained to take, EMS, you know, but people have to be able to get there. And for that reason, having a scrum of media and curious people around greatly complicates that. So whatever can be done to protect such facilities from that is important. And then we're very lucky that we were aware of this risk. Everyone's aware in public health of this risk. So we were very fortunate to get this additional funding from the Oregon Health Authority to be doing, we've been doing proactive training for these facilities in things like hand washing, food preparation, and general hygiene. So I hope that we reap some measure of protection locally from that. So I think, I think talking about all those things and being prepared to reassure people that, yes, this is a problem, these are very high-risk environments, but no, it's not dangerous that it's in your neighborhood. It's not dangerous that for you to drop things off there, it's not dangerous, et cetera. And then the other thing you can do is just, if you have any family members or even just the people, the poor people are having to work in that, just, you know, send cards and flowers to them, just, you know, wish them well.
Best practices is something we've been preparing for, so there's dissemination of that information. And then also between facilities, just communicating about what's a struggle, just like you're talking about supplies or, you know, anything coming or going, you know, how do you deal with that and what's the best practice? So that's, you know, terminology, but I mean, that's what we need to learn right now.
And also encouraging suppliers, merchants and whatnot to put them high up on, high up on the list of who gets served. And I would ditto that for the people that are, as this progresses, we're going to have more and more people under voluntary self-quarantine, ditto for them, the same messaging, that it's not, there's no danger to take food and drop it off at the house. messaging, that it's not, there's no danger to take food and drop it off at the house. If you're, if you're very squeamish, you know, maybe you call ahead so that they're behind the door or whatever, the screen door, hopefully to be better than that. But so that people are not wary about helping to support this and have a, a real idea what the risk is and the way to protect oneself and that, I mean, social distance, that, that issue's obviated. If there's a, you know, if there's a glass door and the person's a foot away, that, that shouldn't carry any, any untoward risk also if somebody's dropping something off. So, so this is just keeping people well-informed, having people feel that they're armed with knowledge like frequent hand washing, cleaning of surfaces, and social distance, but reassuring them that as much of life as possible that usually takes place should continue without fear or worry.
Great.
So, another issue that's, I think we need to start thinking about is with this issue of canceling of events. And as a county, we're specifically impacted because we provide the county fairgrounds to a variety of commercial and nonprofit groups that use it to raise money or gather people or whatever. And we've, I believe we've canceled the next month of events. And that, at notices, Jeff Heinz is here from the Fair and Expo Department, but we've, this is, and it's going on in other ways, it's going to have an impact on a lot of people. And I think people, there's a lot of people in the workforce that are concerned about their jobs as well, particularly businesses. But, so what, is it reasonable, the extent we're doing things, to protect it? It seems like what we're trying to do is almost starve the virus by pulling people away, having no contact, no, and is that realistic? And because the impact is going to be large and, and not only, I'm just speaking of Chutes County because we can see specific things. Tony mentioned the crab feeding the pine, is that this weekend?
Yes.
Is one that, you know, would that happen? You know, there's things that were canceled, the sportsman show. So there's going to be a detrimental effect to businesses, but also to working people and just at a time when we've kind of, the economy's gotten strong. So what are your thoughts about the trade-off there and...
I have two thoughts on that. One is that it's something that we definitely have to consider. And we have to be prepared to make choices, such choices, in a way that they're based on evidence and the best available information. And the evidence and the best available information is that there is an untoward risk when you have large crowds of people, especially if the architecture of the event precludes the social distance that we've recommended. So, for example, I think very few restaurants, et cetera, will find it easy to comply with the six-foot social distance guideline. I think public events like that would be difficult. The other thing is that, and there hasn't been much discussion, discussion about this, but I think it's very important. So there's much discussion about the downstream economic effects of disruptive policies. However, I'd refer you to Italy for an illustration of the downstream effects that I'm much more concerned about, which is if, if we fail locally and nationally to either contain or delay the transmission of the virus in a definitive fashion, as quickly as we can, that will lead to a much larger economic catastrophe and things like regional shutdowns and other things where the entire country of Italy, which actually has a first-rate, by all accounts, healthcare system, is now in a very difficult circumstance, partially because they did not act as quickly as, as might have been prudent early on. So I think that, that locally, I understand the hurt, probably almost everybody has a retirement account or something else that's taken a few hits last week or two.
A few.
So I think, I think pretty much everybody gets that. But if you want, if you want to see real downstream costs, look at the models for what happens, which have been published recently by CDC, WHO. The difference between moving as quickly as you can, once you know, doing the main things you can do to control the spread of the epidemic, and delaying that. If you delay it, the, the costs go through the roof and the, the issues we're raising now become trivial.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not advocating any delay or lack of effort. What I'm asking really is kind of where the trade-off is. And there are downstream effects immediately with regard to, I think, employment. There's, I know people that have already been told by their bosses that they don't need to come into work. If you, and they're, they tend to be a lot of service jobs, you know, the service industries, restaurants, motels, you know, airlines, but I can, you know, but I could see it in other things when the manufacturing slows and everything. And so I guess one of the things I'm wondering is, is it realistic that we can kind of starve the virus and, and stop, you know, contain it in such a large scale where, you know, in three weeks it's covered the entire United States with cases or something?
Well, I think that there's a lively debate now in public health. There are people that advocate going straight to what's called mitigation, which is primarily preparing to deal with the people that are most ill. However, most of the outputs about mitigation from the Centers for Disease Control, WHO, and if you listen to Director Allen at the OHA yesterday, and there was an OPB interview immediately following the governor's declaration, even for mitigation, you have to do your best to contain and delay infections. And that, that helps change the curve of the distribution of population. So if you keep it at more gradual dissemination, then you don't have high peaks that could overwhelm the healthcare system. So every, no effort to containment is wasted, even if we believe that the virus may become widespread. If we look at the, the flu epidemic that killed so many people in the aftermath of World War I, the Spanish flu epidemic, it started in 2018, but killed up to 50 million people worldwide in 2019. The locales that closed many public events and many operations quickly had better outcomes than those that did not. And the boards of health that, that did well, those cities kept vigorous boards of health, and those that did not had a lot of work they had to do to fix their underlying susceptibility. So I think all the evidence is that we should do everything we can to follow up, contain, and even if we can't contain, we can put it back in a box, but, but whatever we can do to delay the spread will, even if it's just by a few weeks or a few months in each locale, will greatly decrease the very high risk of having a circumstance that overwhelms one's capacity with your institution such as healthcare.
And just so you're not quoted incorrectly, it's 1918 and 1919.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I say 20?
Yeah.
Well, 2018 was the flu that killed 79,400 in America.
Well, I did say after World War I.
Yeah. No, I know, I know what you're talking about. Yeah. I just...
Hopefully any astute editor will catch that.
Yep. Good.
I have to, I have to admit to conflating in the other direction because I sign a lot of papers for the department and I'm still occasionally putting 19 after the signature date. And so I apologize. It's, thanks for the correction. I didn't realize I'd said that.
So, Tony? We're good? Administrator Anderson, is there anything special you want to say this morning?
Well, not necessarily pertaining to the general discussion that we've just had and an update from Dr. Conway and Morgan. There were a couple other items, when you're ready, that we were hoping to discuss with you, the emergency declaration being one. And I don't know if you would like to talk any further about Fair and Expo. Just maybe elaborate a little bit on Commissioner Henderson's comment a few minutes ago. I don't know that we've categorically canceled all events over the next month. Certainly those that we know exceed the 250-person limit that the governor directed us a couple of days ago. And in those situations, Jeff Heinz has, and his staff have reached out to those organizers to basically touch base with them on what their plans are, if they intend to cancel or if there are any other alternatives for holding the event that may disperse the crowd of attendees to potentially meet the limits that were imposed by the governor's directive. So we're, we're working on those on a case-by-case basis. However, there is sort of a policy decision that we were hoping to discuss with the board at some point about, I mean, would it be, would it be prudent to impose more of a blanket closure on facilities during this critical period, even for those that are less than the 250? So we can certainly have a little bit more discussion on that if you're willing today or Monday, when Jeff will be there. And then the final point had to do with employee communications. We discussed with you this past Wednesday some options for how we might deal with potential office closures or even, you know, as was announced today, the closing of schools and how that impacts our employees who are parents of children in those schools. So we've got some draft communication for employees that you haven't had a chance to see, but we have copies today. If that's something that you'd like to discuss or we can certainly provide the copies and then follow up with you on Monday, if you prefer. So just a few other items for, potential items for this morning's discussion at your pleasure.
Okay.
So with regard to the, to employees of the county, what, are there some situations you think need to be communicated with today? Is there, is there certain departments that you're more concerned about or is it county-wide? Well, I mean, we have a lot of different kinds of employees doing a lot of different things, so...
Well, obviously the immediate news is the school closure and we've already had...
I don't even know that. What's that news?
Two weeks, the schools will be closed, starting Monday.
Two or three?
Two, two, starting Monday, but, but with the option of extension.
Okay.
Right.
Well, the second week is spring break anyway, so, so it's just, it's just one week of...
For example, a department director approached me this morning, said they've, they've got two employees with young children who are in school and with no provisions for next, beginning next week for coverage. And these are key employees that provide direct service. And, you know, what, you know, what should they do? So we, we went through with them, or I went through with them, the, some of the options, immediate options that we had discussed on Wednesday in terms of potentially working from home, you know, their sick leave balance, their, their paid time off balance and, you know, other potential options in terms of, you know, unique to that employee. So, but what we'd like to do is provide additional information today
Yeah, that's what...
To both supervisors and employees.
That's what I'm asking. So we really, those people, they're going to have that issue Monday.
Yeah.
And this is Friday. So we should probably talk about those policies today, if we're going to. I mean, if we wait till Monday that...
I'm sure they would appreciate if we would talk about it today.
So that'd be a thing we, I think we should. And I'm in favor of talking about the, really everything you brought up to some extent. I mean, the emergency order and what that is and where, who, what other counties are adopting it and why and all that, but, so...
Dave, did you want to enlighten us regarding the emergency declaration?
Sure. Commissioners, typically the emergency declaration from a county would precede a declaration from the state. It's typically asking the state to, to take that type of action and free up some resources. But in this case, the, the state's already done that, but the, probably the primary benefits of an emergency declaration at the county level is, one, it relaxes certain procurement and contracting rules. And as Dr. George indicated, there may be some need for some timely action on procuring certain items. Secondly, it authorizes public health-motivated deviations from certain employment provisions with regard to some of our workforce. And so that gives you some latitude there.
What, can you explain what you mean by that?
Yeah, certainly. It allows deviations from the county's personnel rules, for instance, that might have some, some requirements in terms of the work day, the work week, the work site, such as here as opposed to at your home, things of that nature. And it gives you a little more flexibility to authorize kind of a as-needed type on-the-fly modifications to some of those.
And that's for county employees?
Yes.
It's within the organization?
Correct.
So it's not about the county, it's the employees? Okay.
Correct. And then probably the most important is it, it operates as a trigger event for tracking county incurred costs that could subsequently be recovered from state and/or federal sources. So I'm sure Dr. George's folks are incurring an awful lot of extra time right now and, and a trigger event such as a declaration would, would sort of start that clock running for our abilities to see Sergeant Garabey's back there. And I know he works a lot with FEMA as well, and there'll be opportunities to work with the federal government and the state to try to recoup some of those extra costs.
So these would be, I know the governor's announced some additional money for these, so it might be access to some of that money? Or it looks like the federal government's going to pass a major bill or did, or they're working on it? So that, it opens us up that way, you're saying, because we've declared an emergency?
Yeah, it opens it up and I would say anecdotally, I think it, it puts you closer to the front of the line. You know, I can, I recall the 96 floods in the valley and we had all the FEMA declarations in the various counties in the valley. And there was definitely a move to try to be one of the early adopters in, in the sense of getting in line sooner because there's only so much dollars to go around. And they do try to do a, you know, they split it up as best they can and apportion it, but it never hurts to be towards the front of the line in pretty much anything.
Do you or Tom or anyone know how many counties have declared emergency already or...
I'm aware of two for sure, but I think Sergeant Garabey could probably speak to that.
Hi, good morning, Commissioner's staff.
You can have a seat.
Go ahead.
We might have other questions.
Social distancing.
Okay.
Get your six feet.
Well, we should...
Yeah. It has been difficult in the EOC. You'll see us all spread over, spread around. At this point, I just actually, what I was looking at on my phone was currently, it looks like just two, Washington Clackamas. But I am aware of a number of counties that are considering, and I would highly suspect that today more will issue declarations.
And I'm aware from my counterparts in Crook and Jefferson that they're both making requests today of their commissioners to do so. Actually, this morning, I believe in both cases.
Okay.
One of the, so everything is newsworthy and so this would come out. And one issue is it does, we're explaining it as a way to get funds, to alter schedules. It's, it's kind of read in the, in the news as, oh, it's really, you know, it's, we're in emergency. So is there any way to explain that if we get the message out or it'll heighten the, I mean, there's a lot of worry already. Does that, it doesn't, it may not, yeah?
There's an infectious disease epidemic and all the best estimates are it's going to get worse before it gets better.
And the Joint Information Center can work closely with Whitney on making sure that we message out what that allows our county to do and the reasons why we're doing that.
How you do the headline would be really critical.
Well, that's, that's our news media outlets, but we can certainly make that request. Yes.
I think, I think just as, as our legal counsel explained, the, the emergency declaration allows the county, gives the county some authorities to help us serve our citizens better. And that's ultimately what that declaration does.
Yeah, I would, I would emphasize the, I mean, many of the things I talked about, about just whether it's providing and ensuring supply chain for people that are, that are self-quarantining or institutions that may be stricken by this. And then also emphasizing the importance of outrage and partner or contact notification and follow-up. It's very arduous. So, I mean, like, if we ask people to self-quarantine, we don't just, you know, ask them to send us a postcard after two weeks. We call them daily, we ask them what they need, et cetera. So it's, it's very labor-intensive. And I think talking about the, the services it will provide and maybe even talking about that if were things to become worse, that we would continue to increase rather than curtail any of those.
So, and I think of it as, it's setting that period of time that it's an incident. Incident management, incident command, you know, contact tracing stepped up drastically during this period of time. And it's good to, you know, have the expertise and the understanding of, you know, when we're talking about infectious disease, that early delay of spread may be the most valuable investment we can make. the most valuable investment we can make. And it is happening around the world at this point in time. So this declaration is talking about a 60-day period, you know, starting the moment it's passed for 60 days. So documenting in a little bit different fashion, more aggressively, about extended and expanded resources that are utilized, being utilized by the county. So truly defining the starting point of an incident.
We do have, in each ICS structure, we do have a finance branch that is charged with documenting as much detail as possible with the extra definable expenses incurred.
And I'm talking about incident management, but this is it. I mean, this is kind of the terminology of, okay, this is like a forest fire event we have sometimes in our area. This is the beginning, and we're going to work our way through it, and hopefully we'll be able to define an end, too.
Is there a motion, or do we need a minute?
Is there anything else? I hadn't really finished reading the whole thing. Is there anything else?
Odd is, we might even want to just read this, you know, even take turns reading some of it, but kind of read it out loud, because we're seeing it the first time. We want to understand what's in here.
Do we start reading out loud?
Sure.
This is a draft at this point. It might change.
So, reading out loud, Order Number 2020-013, in order declaring a state of emergency. Whereas ORS 401.305 provides authority for Deschutes County to act as an emergency management agency, including authority to establish policies and protocols for defining and directing responsibilities during time of emergency. And whereas ORS 401.309 and Deschutes County Code 2.04, and then Deschutes County Emergency Operations Plan, authorize the county governing body to declare a state of emergency within the county or within a designated portion of the county, and to establish procedures to prepare for and carry out activities which are necessary to prevent, minimize, respond to, or recover from an emergency. And whereas the following conditions have resulted in the need for a local state of emergency: A, the presence of a presumptive case of coronavirus COVID-19 in Deschutes County; B, emergency orders from the governor restricting gatherings, closing schools, encouraging social distancing, and remote business operation. And whereas the presence of COVID-19 constitutes a high potential threat to public health, to wit infectious coronavirus COVID-19, which is known to spread person-to-person through coughing, sneezing, and close personal contact, and, next.
Okay, I know, that was five?
Eight.
I don't know if it's the right-
And did you read the word, whereas?
That's the next one, yeah.
Okay, great. That was five. How'd you know? Whereas on March 11th, 2020, the World Health Organization declared, what?
Back up one.
Oh, one more? Oh, all right. Well, we'll start up four. Whereas on March 8th, 2020, Governor Kate Brown signed Executive Order Number 20-03, declaring a statewide emergency due to COVID-19 outbreak in Oregon. And whereas on March 11th, 2020, the World Health Organization declared the COVID-19 outbreak as a pandemic. And whereas the following disruption of important services, damage to life, or damage to property can be expected in association with COVID-19: A, COVID-19 is expanding worldwide, including a declared global pandemic, and a declared outbreak in Oregon; B, Oregon county resources will be needed to respond to this threat to keep the public as safe as possible; C, resources related to contact tracing, disease investigation and prevention, continuity of operations, public information, and funding are expected to be exhausted now. Therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Deschutes County, Oregon hereby orders as follows. Section 1, pursuant to ORS 401-309, DCC 2.04, and the Deschutes County EOP, the Board of Commissioners for Deschutes County formally declare a state of emergency for Deschutes County, effective on this 13th day of March 2020, and continuing for 60 days from the date of this order, unless extended or terminated earlier by the Board of Commissioners. Okay, I'll read this last one. Section 2, upon this declaration of a state of emergency, the Board of Commissioners shall be authorized to take and/or direct such actions and issue such orders as are determined to be necessary to protect the public and property, and to effectively conduct activities that minimize or mitigate the effect of the emergency as authorized by ORS, DCC, and the Deschutes County EOP.
Section 3, the county administrator, local public health administrator, administrator, and emergency manager, shall take all necessary steps authorized by law to coordinate response and recovery from this emergency, including, but not limited to, coordinating with the state of Oregon and the federal government in order to qualify Deschutes County for all available state and federal emergency assistance, not limited to the use of shared resources, assistance from the state and federal agencies, and financial assistance and reimbursements. Section 4, emergency procurements of goods and services are authorized pursuant to ORS 279B-8080, ORS 279C-335-6, ORS 279380-sub4, and Deschutes County contracting rules. Section 5, with regard to county employees, the Board of Commissioners may authorize modifications to relevant personnel leave, payroll processes, and workplace requirements, designations as deemed necessary by the Board of Commissioners to address impacts associated with COVID-19. Section 6, the scope of this declaration is in support of COVID-19 public health response, being overseen and directed by the state of Oregon. The residents of Deschutes County are encouraged to follow standard hygiene protocols, stay at home when ill, but otherwise, wear reasonable and safe, go on with daily life. Section 7, this order is effective upon signing.
All right. So having read it out loud, and I think that's good for anyone that is interested in it, that might be watching, I'd move approval of this order. We can still discuss it, but Order Number 2020-013.
Well, and I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
I'd like to say it was good to read it out loud. I mean, because I was reading it also, but it was for all of us to take turns reading the sections of it, understanding the contracting parts of this, and it interrelates with the state and the federal government, and it is because of COVID-19. So it was really good, and well-written. I want to thank our staff for putting all that together for us.
Mr. Anderson, do you have any further discussion?
Yeah, well, I just think, having heard what we've heard today, that getting ahead of this as much as possible, we're a, you know, a community in Deschutes County where we have a lot of tourism, a lot of people coming into the area. We also have a lot of people who'll be impacted potentially in lawn care facilities, and service workers, lots of employees. So I think it's good for us to do what Dr. Conway has suggested, to try to delay and contain ahead of things. So that's the base of my support and help with that.
I also support the document, and one thing we hadn't really talked about this morning was our homeless population. And I just feel like, if we can get as, you know, many hand sanitizers to them, if there's anything, Morgan, you wanted to say about that, but I just, you know, I feel like we should mention it.
Absolutely. So yesterday, we had two staff members go out to Juniper Ridge, and they actually set up a temporary handwashing station, and we're getting them some hand sanitizers as well for outreach.
Okay, what about China Hat? Because I've heard that some of the Juniper Ridge people are moving to China Hat.
We can work on getting some-
No, it's the Forest Service.
Absolutely. We do have some staff working specifically on homeless outreach, and we can work on getting that location reached as well.
Okay, because Colleen actually spoke to our group Tuesday night in Sisters, but we just didn't touch upon it at that moment.
Yeah, I will make sure that gets-
And extending beyond that, there's, you know, there's also west of town, up Century and Skylar. So I would be in contact with Kovo, because they know where lots of homeless population is, and they may be willing to help with this. They have a lot of volunteers. Yesterday, I was in a meeting where J.W. Terry was explaining to the group about the number of volunteers they have. That might, this might be a perfect example of something they could do, so that would be somebody to get in contact and go further.
I actually spoke to J.W. this morning on the way to town, and I think I need to remind everyone that kindness could be used everywhere. Heard about a lot of unkind things that have been happening, and we just, we really need to be kinder. And especially, you know, there's going to be a lot of vulnerable people that we need to, you know, like, just go a bit further than maybe, or keep our distance, but be very kind. So Commissioner, or do you want to say anything else?
Uh, no, I did.
Okay. Commissioner Henderson?
I vote yes.
Commissioner Tabon?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So the order will be signed.
Great. Great discussion today. Thank you so much.
Yeah. So one other thing, then, with regard to Tom's suggestion about employee policies, is that something we want to take up today? Do we want to take a break and get those organized, or you already have them, or is that-
We have copies that we can pass out to you right now, so why don't we go ahead and do that, and then we can, you can decide. There's several pages involved. If you want to take a break and review that, or we can walk you through them, or hit the highlights, or just provide them to you, and then we could bring it back on Monday. Your choice. Well, yeah, why don't we go ahead and pass them out to staff, and Kathleen Hinman, our HR director, is also here to explain, answer any questions you might-
Were these implemented in a past period of time? I mean, have they ever been, or is this a brand-new document, Kathleen?
We've done similar things in the past. The two major snow events we've had in the last three years, we've issued some, if you will, emergency policies and guidance for our departments on staff being able to report to work, get into work. But these are really tailored to the current coronavirus situation in our state, and in fact, go further. There's some, as you, if you recall, earlier this week, we went, discussed some things that we haven't done before in terms of really addressing hardship situations that are, some of our employees may be faced with, who, for a variety of personal reasons, may not have the leave time built up to be able to, you know, not affect their regular compensations, I have to say. But, so, yeah, but these, again, they address, you know, things like working from home, which is something that we're really trying to encourage. And in fact, our IT department is taking some really urgent steps to increase our capacity for those that are able to. Obviously, not all employees are able to work from home due to the nature of their jobs, but ramp up that possibility for employees.
Would there be a need to do anything today with regard to employees that have kids that are going to be home? That's a big deal when your kids are not going to school like they're supposed to, and there's, you don't have coverage, et cetera. It's big for, throughout the community, but is there something we need to do about that today?
As I said, I'd like to send out the draft note that's in front of you. This is, the first one is to department directors, as sort of a lead to give them a heads up, and then there would be a follow-up note, similar to the first one, that would go to all employees that would, you know, as I said, kind of mirror that to a certain extent, but be worded differently. So, yeah, we'd like to get that out. So if you want to take a break, or Kathleen can kind of hit the high points of it.
Dr. Conway wanted to say something, I believe.
Yeah, actually, it just, it's sure to become evident as we review these, but there's one particular concern that we, because we've been doing outreach and trying to develop internal proposed policies, that it would be better to address early. And that is, in instances where people either don't have any leave balance, or they're not, it's not a position that's amenable to work from home, that the county's employer consider liberal allowance for leave without pay, and assuring that none of the downstream consequences occur if they have to stay home with their children, if they're quarantined or whatever, where the extended leave without pay can result in loss of health insurance and other supports. So I think the thing that I'm most concerned about is, there's a lot of asymmetries between exempt and non-exempt employees that can be addressed downstream. But the most dire outcome that I think people are very worried about, that have been thinking about this, would be being protected from not having some dire consequence, like losing their health insurance during an epidemic, because they don't have any leave balances. So I would recommend that be the highest priority in these considerations.
Okay. Thank you. Kathleen, did you want to go over the high points with us?
Yeah, I think that, first off, I should say that there is, I think, some urgency felt from departments to get information out to employees. There's a lot of questions coming in. I have about five different departments that are sort of sitting, waiting, with communications ready to go, but we want to make sure that we have a uniform approach to that. And so in terms of the communication out, it's really just what we're doing as an organization. In terms of supervisor resource guide, we're really looking at addressing kind of those top needs, talking about how to address employee illness and leave surrounding that. And we're actually encouraging supervisors to be flexible with remote work options when available, to be flexible with schedule changes or temporary schedule changes. So we are looking at allowing that, approving leave without those consequences that Dr. Conway addressed. The other pieces that kind of we're talking about in this are what to do with the school closures, and really, that's a piece that we're currently working on. But the first and foremost is that supervisors are to begin discussions, if they haven't already, on plans on how, what needs exist, what plans employees currently have in addressing their childcare needs, if any. And the other piece is that we have some employees who have health vulnerabilities and are concerned about either some of the work they do, and so we're being, we're encouraging flexibility in addressing those and meeting those needs. We are looking at remote work options in terms of both for exempt and non-exempt, when available, and when it makes sense to do that. We are asking that departments be flexible in consideration with that as well. So maybe thinking a little bit outside the box at times in terms of work that can be done. We're coordinating with facilities in terms of sanitizing extra workspaces and communicating that with departments, and we're suggesting, highly suggesting, the social distancing, and almost a forced social distancing, so kind of directing visitors to certain areas versus just coming into workspaces, and really limiting that. So working on a communication with that as well. And then the other one is that we're advising departments to, you know, reduce, eliminate, or think differently about how business-related travel, or conferences, or meetings occur, should they need to occur.
Are there going to be any conferences? It doesn't look like it.
In the near future.
Right. And so we are, HR is working to triage questions, to support the workforce, supervisors, in meeting their needs, as well as continuing service as possible to the community. So that's really our goal right now. That is the sort of number-one focus of HR, as questions come in, making sure that we're getting uniform and appropriate questions out. We're actually coordinating quite closely with public health to make sure that we are using the appropriate language around, and expectations around, when to stay home, what the symptoms are, et cetera.
Is there a difference between-
There's not much. There are some where-
Why are there two, then?
Right. So one is for what supervisors, so there is a little bit of difference in terms of what supervisors are expected to do. And then another one is what really employees are expected to do. And there's really a lot of similarity there, I will point out. And we actually expect that these will likely be living documents. So as we continue to request and ask questions to come in through the HR team, the HR inbox, that we will then be triaging them into an FAQ, so that we can get that information out, again, uniform and timely, without having to sort of answer the same question again and again and again, if possible.
Well, I know that a couple of weeks ago, we had, one of our departments had three children at St. Charles with the flu, because it's, the current flu has been incredibly hard on children. So that had to be, you know, a situation for that department to deal with at that time. Yeah. So, you know, it's, and this, of course, is another issue. So do you have, do you have any other issues with this?
No, are we being asked for action, or do we need to approve this? Um, no. Are, are we being asked for action? Or do we need to approve this? Or is it?
You don't need to approve it. We just wanted to share it with you and make sure that we were aligned with you in terms of the messaging to our employees. And obviously, there's a whole lot of concern out there and anxiety over, you know, what the various closures mean. Things, as you know, are happening every day. There's a new bit of news out there. So we want to make sure that we're communicating often and as thoroughly as we can with our employees to try and get them the most up-to-date information. And also recognize that, you know, this is a dynamic and uncertain environment, and, you know, we'll, that we're in it together.
Well, so I'm supportive of the discussion about leave policy and, you know, if leave is gone, I, I will have to have a discussion of how we facilitate that, or, you know, whatever it is. I don't think we have to do that today, but I'm supportive of that. The other thing I've wondered about is, like, leave's here, and I know we're doing a lot of cleaning, and then we may not, I don't know if we have enough people to do the cleaning and everything, but there may be people that are being laid off in other jobs, community jobs, and is there a way, would we be maybe doing more temporary hiring, even in the health department if there's issues? I would bet less people go to private health appointments than, than if, I mean, I'll bet there'll be a decrease. I think people are retracting their social contacts. And so are there ways to fill the gaps if we have them in terms of, if we need, you know, the personnel? So, but I, I don't know. That's, it's a different policy now, but it's thinking of beyond the, the next step. If we do have people on leave, and we have things that need to be done, is there people in the community that could do this short-term?
That's actually an excellent point. We, particularly if we get into situations where an employee doesn't have sufficient leave, that we could, you know, provide other county duties that they could do safely, and for the benefit of all of our facilities and organizations. We've done things in the past when somebody has an injury, where they're on light duty or on modified duty, and we've done, had some flexibility there. So this could be similarly applied to our employees. And, and if there's not enough or not sufficient, we use temporary employees frequently in, in many of our departments to cover, you know, bumps, one-time needs. And we'd certainly be willing to, and, and would likely take advantage of that as well. And hopefully, we don't recruit those temporary employees, but folks who have been laid off or out of work, I know temporary agencies are frequently in, in effort or an area where they look to, you know, quickly gain some employment. So it's very possible.
I know. I heard Dr. Fauci talking that he's been having four, um, three hours of sleep a night. But I, so, you know, that's a serious issue, and I don't want our public health department to, like, work, you know, 20 days in a row. You have to, you have to maintain your health, and you're, you know, if you're working, you can be more, you know, in a more vulnerable position to post, to get something that you don't want to get.
Actually, I have a question directly related to that, and then, and then a related question. That is that a common practice in some personnel systems is permission for even otherwise exempt employees to accumulate what in the federal government is called compensatory time, where they're not paid cash, but they're allowed after the emergency is over to, to recoup some additional time that they can take off to, to allow them to recuperate from the vigors of however long things have lasted. So that's the first question. And then the second question, Sergeant Garabee and I had a long discussion about this yesterday with another colleague. It's typical in fire and law enforcement, I think, in some EMS, that if an individual is occupationally exposed to a pathogen, and they're ordered to, to stay at home, or, for example, a fireman is burned and has to stay at home and not be able to make chef, that beyond whatever workers' comp can do, and infectious disease, actually, there's a kind of vagaries in workers' comp, that if someone, for example, health, one of our health workers is contaminated by a client coughing on them, that ends up being diagnosed, or some other thing, or people are making home visits, or going to long-term care facilities, if they have a exposure that's adjudged as being occupational and sufficient, that they must self-quarantine. In many of these organizations, they're compensated as though they were at work, rather than having to use leave time or whatever else. And I think that's, that's a fairness issue that I hope we can also consider.
So Kathleen, have we addressed that?
So that is actually something that we've discussed with Eric Krapp, who oversees the work comp, as well as with Matrix, who is our, our third-party administrator for workers' comp. And, and current practice will be that we would treat it like an exposure with anything, where they do have the, up until it is considered a, if there's, there's a period of time that will be determined if it is a true exposure, so confirmed, that period of time would fall under the workers' comp benefit. And so that would be, you know, current time loss compensation, et cetera. So there are additional considerations being discussed about what, if anything, we do beyond that. We don't currently with our exposures, but that, you know, we're in a different situation right now. But there, so there, there is that sort of safety net for those. They wouldn't be necessarily required to use their own leave unless required workers' comp has a three-day requirement of own leave there. And then there are different components under the collective bargaining agreements for, that allow for different benefits under that. So we would, of course, follow sort of that standard there.
Great.
Well, yeah, at this point, understanding what the options are, understanding what's fair and equitable, and then, you know, the cause and effect of, of a leave, especially, you know, kids at home, this is going to be a very dynamic time. So we're laying it out here right now in a public meeting. We've, I've got the proposed starting point. And yeah, it's good to talk about it, and I'm sure we'll talk about it again Monday afternoon as we, and each day as necessary, as we go down this path.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. One other related item has to do with public meetings. The Governor's Directive a couple of days ago certainly addressed the big events, which we may talk about again in a minute as it relates to Fair and Expo. But there was also some guidance given on smaller public meetings. For instance, meetings in this building, your meetings, for example, and as well as making our meeting rooms available to sometimes larger gatherings in, in the diarmand in this hallway. So I know at least one other public, local government organization in our area has suspended all their elected body meetings for, I believe, 30 days. I'm not sure, even though the attendance is large at your meetings here, we, we, I'm not sure if that's something that's entered your mind, or if that's something you'd like to consider. We, as you see today, we've done our best to deploy the room in, with social distancing and spread ourselves out here. So I just want to raise that, since other governments have brought it up. If that's something you'd like to do, either, again, with respect to your meetings, or allowing others to use our meeting settings in this building for larger gatherings. Any thoughts on those?
When you're talking larger, isn't it, it has to be under 100?
Well, we don't really, other than this room fully open, we don't have quite that capacity. But sometimes, for example, we've allowed other groups to do trainings in diarmand, or this room where they might have, you know, 30, 40, sometimes 50 people here. So it, it, you know, we certainly could, within the context of what's going on right now, say we're going to kind of suspend larger meetings like that, whether they're internal or.
Next week, we have, I think, Project Wildfires set for Tuesday.
Good example.
Later in the day, there's the 911 user board. I mean, those both have those kind of sizes.
I've canceled the 911.
Oh, has it?
It just came through.
Um, from a Commissioner's, for our business, I'm, a lot of times, we don't have very big crowds. So I guess that would be one thing that would save us. The other is that I think our meetings will, in the next few weeks, may have this component in them, what we've just spent the last hour and a half on. So I, and, I mean, I'm, I would prefer to go forward with our meetings. I think if we get larger crowds, we would maybe encourage the spreading out of seating until we get to a certain point. I guess if that's the, the biggest risk, I don't know if you can do six foot, I don't know how many people can sit here at that. But anyway, I, but a lot of our meetings don't have that, so I'm not as concerned, I guess.
Well, we can talk about it Monday for other meetings, too. You know, if we're, if we're really asking a large group to come together and, you know, let's evaluate each one as it comes up. I do support that.
May, the, the guidance about social distancing and six feet refers to a radius.
Yeah.
So that people behind you, for example, you know, if you're thinking about, like, aircraft travel, that if you happen to have an empty seat in the middle, but you have somebody sneezing on your, your, the nape of your neck for the whole flight, that, that's problematic.
Yeah. I always imagine it like you have a six-foot skirt on or something, and who would you call it? So we would all be too, too close or whatever.
Well, I've got, I just want a measuring tape. So I guess I'm going to have to walk around with my measuring tape at six feet, right?
Well, you can put it in your Kleenex box.
Yes, in my Kleenex box. Yes, of course. Sounds like a good idea. So, you know, I think we should discuss that Monday further. But usually, I think it's critical that we have our meetings, and because they are recorded, it's a good idea, so that people can actually see what is happening in Deschutes County, you know, at whatever time is convenient for them. All right. So, we, let's see.
That's good.
We're good with the employees, so we know. So that's great. Thank you. Kathleen? That's Dr. Conway.
Where are your clothes? It sounds like you may be heading in that direction. I just want to thank Commissioner Henderson again for helping me keep my centuries straight.
Well, and I appreciate you keeping my wording straight.
There you go.
I get the points of that. I heard an interesting story from our fair director yesterday about an emergency he had at a fair event. And it was a, if I'm, if you don't mind, it was discussed, it was described as a injury at a fair from a ride. And that causes all sorts of, he said, the, the next 20 press releases, we're all trying to correct that word. That took over the whole thing because a ride creates different injury from a ride. It was really, what was it, Jeff?
There's a legal definition in California between a ride, which has a legal definition, and an attraction.
Attraction.
Or it's different compliance.
So this wording is, is important. So, thanks.
Yes.
Well, we're on the fair. If I could just add real briefly, I might want to recognize our fair director, Jeff Heinz. I mean, yesterday, within hours of the Governor's Declaration with regard to the mass gatherings, he was having to manage the very large show. We were in back-and-forth communications with the Department of Justice, getting clarification on the 250 limit and what that meant. Did it apply collectively, or what if there were multiple buildings? And, you know, Jeff really did a good job of managing, dealing with all those parties. I was, I was quite impressed, and I was proud to work with him on that.
Well, thank you. Thank you for that good news. Now, can someone please get the Masters reinstated?
Yeah.
I know, on a different note, my husband is so upset, and I'm like, oh, honey. So yes, we need the Masters back as soon as possible.
So Commissioners, if I, if I could, just on that subject, as I said earlier, sort of our, our operating premise with the Fair and Expo Center going forward is that we will continue to work with each scheduled events, because we have a whole range of events scheduled over the next month, six weeks, some of which, as I said, that are clearly over the 250 Jeff has worked, and his staff are working closely with to find out what their intent and plans are. But there's many smaller events. So our premise, again, was to, in number one, ensure that the facility is as clean and sanitized as it possibly can be, but to generally allow those events, barring additional direction from the state, allow those events to continue. In other words, operating our business as best we can, given the context, versus, you know, if, if you are governing body, feel it's in the public interest to just completely shut down the facility over that period of time, that's sort of the other tack here. So if you have any thoughts on that or direction on that, we'd appreciate hearing them.
I'd, I'd like to have a discussion about that on Monday, because I think that is a, an ongoing issue in the scope of, you know, ultimately, the vendor has to decide what they're doing under the law, and we have to decide what we're doing under the law. And then, and then there's a social responsibility part and everything else, legal issues. So I'd like to have a discussion about that on Monday, if we, if the other Commissioners agree.
I think that's appropriate.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, things are happening fast. I mean, the world may look a little different on Monday, a couple of days from now.
So, yes. Okay. Thank you. So are we ready to adjourn then? Okay. The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all for attending today.